Okay, since we're all here, I'd like to call the May 26 special meeting of the Board of Education to order. And first item on the agenda is comments from the public, and we do not have any comments tonight. So we can move right into the discussion with Attorney Chinny. And I do have her letter, but since she's here with us, we can start with Attorney Chinny. And we can go through the information, people can ask questions. And then we can go into further discussion from there. Chris, I'm not sure if you have, I can read the letter or you can paraphrase it, it's up to you.
It's, I'm provably happy to just paraphrase it. Since we had, since our last meeting, I've interviewed seven additional students, one additional parent, and five additional adults that fall into various categories. I also have interviews set up with two parents of a student I've already spoken with, because her information indicated to me that the parents would have useful information for me. I've also spoken to someone who I only had a snail mail address for, who I sent the letter to. He got right back to me, he spoke with me today. He has some documents that he's going to share with me, and we're going to set up an interview. And he has some information and documents that he believes to be relevant to the investigation. And based on what I've read, I believe them to be relevant as well. Students who I've spoken with are continuing to refer additional students to me. I now have some coverage going all the way back to 2006 and all the way up to 2019, which is good, because I have a much broader timeframe of reference. I would like to continue. I feel like it would send a bad message right now, now that people are really coming forward, to say, okay, we're halting this on June 1. I understand closure is important, I want closure for everyone. But I wouldn't want to be sending a message to the students who are now really starting to come forward, and their parents who are now really starting to come forward, that, well, now that we're getting information, we don't want to hear from any more people. My position has always been, we should listen to anybody who wants to talk to me. And so I'd like to, I'd like to play that out for at least a couple of more weeks, because I feel like there are still, there are still people coming forward. And I'm also very hopeful that the information I'll get from this new adult, who I don't want to identify at this point, just to keep the process pure, will cause me to need to circle back with some of our administrators, and perhaps with some of the students as well. So I want to allow time for that whole process to complete, so that I can give you a full picture of what you've asked me to look into.
Okay, thank you. We'll open it up for people to ask further questions, more specific information. Not too, we won't be getting too specific, I believe. Anything that Attorney Chinny thinks will perhaps skew maybe interviews coming forward, or prevent people from thinking, you know, the process would be continuing. So I'll leave that up to Attorney Chinny.
That is one concern I have. I don't want information shared in this public forum before I've produced the report to possibly cause people, whether it's student victims or others, to try to line up their stories. I want to hear the story, I want to hear everybody's story straight from them. So I don't want to give up too many details of what I've heard up to now, because I don't want people lining up their stories.
Is there somebody whom I have a question for Attorney?
I have a quick question. So the people who are coming forward, are they, do they all come forward like right after the article? Or they've been pretty consistent time-wise?
Well, when, when I got onto the, when I got onto the forum, there was a flurry of activity right away. And I spoke, and I would say three or four interviews developed within a day of that happening. Since then, people I've talked to have reached out to friends of theirs and said, you should talk to her, she's, she wants to hear what you have to say, she's being very fair. It's not an interrogation type of process. And so I've gotten good results from word of mouth coming off of that initial group of folks that came to, came to me and reached out on the SPS Investigations email after we were on, I got onto the forum and was able to make that plea there.
So it's been fairly consistent?
I'm sorry, pardon?
So it's been fairly consistent?
You mean in terms of how many people are coming forward? Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
So it was...
I would, that's why I would like to give it a little more time.
When was, I don't know if you can get this specific, when was the last time someone new reached out to you?
Yeah, Friday.
Okay, oh, so very real, okay.
And then, actually today. The gentleman whom I sent the letter just reached out to me this morning.
Great, thank you.
Attorney Chinny, I just had one, I have a couple of things. But first of all, in your, the past, the report that you gave us a week and a half ago, I just had a question about it. In the scope of adult interviews?
Yes.
You said, "An adult, a parent of several students, indicated that she had had concerns about Mr. Chokus after hearing reports from her child and some other students, and had shared these concerns with the administration." Can you go any further with that? Did, what was the response from the administration? Was there a response?
She did say that they looked into it, but she, she felt that it should have been handled in a different way. So obviously, one of the things I need to do now is circle back to the administrators and say, well, this person says, that's what happened, what's your response to that? Yeah. And, and I, but I don't want to keep going back to them, so I want to wait till I complete the student, parent, and community interviews, whatever they may tell me about your staff, and then go back to your staff and say, okay. And I warned the staff when I first interviewed them, that that was very likely to happen, that this was not going to be the last that they would be speaking with me, that I would have to circle back with them to hear what they had to say in response to whatever came up in the interviews. So they're prepared for that, they fully expect that to happen. And any good investigator would do that. Any good investigator would do that.
To have a before and after kind of interview. So you would go to them first, see what they would say, then begin investigating, and then take that information back and say, this doesn't quite mesh.
Remember also, we are all very, well, I should speak only for myself. I was very naive about what the COVID-19 virus was going to do. So my thought also initially in interviewing the administration was, well, these are people I'm comfortable interviewing on Zoom, and then I'll just be driving down to Stonington within the next few weeks. Well, it obviously hasn't played out that way. But in any event, I generally speaking, I would wanted to go to the administration, get them to tell me their version of events. Then I want to hear from the students and what they have to say, and parents, because there are some, two of the parents I'm hoping to talk to later this week have things to tell me about what they believe, how they pursued their concerns, and what their, how they felt about the responses that they got to the concerns that they raised. But I've already interviewed the daughter, I've given what she told me, I want to interview her parents as well. And they've, they've said they're willing to speak to me, I just have to, we just have to find a convenient time.
Great. So in the last report, I felt that you had like two categories, two big categories, where you were revealing things. And one was producing some anecdotes that make the rumors, quote unquote rumors, evidence-based because of facts, because these students are actually telling. There was that angle. And then as well, you showed the process and procedures that were in place at the time were wanting in some respect. So I wondered, in your investigation, if you had, are you gathering more anecdotes that primarily are evidence or interviewees that fit into those two categories? Or actually, are there other areas that you were pursuing?
Well, remember, my primary concerns, and I think your primary concerns as well, is if, if it's, if it is the case that there were many students that were made very uncomfortable of
Oh, no.
gentlemen, either they came forward and things were not done, or they didn't come forward. And if they didn't come forward, of course, then the next question is, why? Were they afraid to? Were they too, was there no adult they felt that they could speak with? Did they not know to whom they should speak? So I have to look at those issues as well.
Right. So those were the two, those are primarily the two areas that you're gathering more evidence that you support things happening.
And I just, to be honest with you, Ms. Simmons, I also, I'm not going to take anybody's statement at face value. So if people come forward and say, well, yes, I did come forward, and I did speak to this person, and this is all that was done, or nothing was done, or I was dissatisfied what was done, or no one ever even got back to me to tell me what was done. I am not assuming that that isn't the case. I'm still, I'm not, in other words, I'm not assuming that no, that no one came forward. I know that that's a claim, but there are other people who say that they did, and I want to hear from them as well. And I want to hear, and even for those who have acknowledged in our interviews that they did not come forward, I feel it's also important for the board to have an understanding of why they didn't, for those who didn't. What is the, why didn't they feel, why didn't they come to somebody and speak about their concerns? So I feel like there are sort of two avenues even within that.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
One, one is, are the people who came forward, and were those allegations that were brought forward handled appropriately? The other is, if people didn't come forward?
Why not?
That's not the end of the inquiry. Then the next inquiry is, why? Did they feel uncomfortable? Did they feel no one would care? Did they not know what the process was for coming forward? Did they hear that others had come forward and nothing was done? Those are all of the, I feel like all of that is important to you, to the board, in assessing what happened here and what needs to happen next.
So you maybe sort of answered this, but, so do you feel that you have leads that will take you into a greater depth of either one of those categories than I said, than you already are in?
Yes.
And if we, and you're asking to at least go to June 1, that's what you're saying. At that time, at June 1, will you be able to tell us in greater detail what these findings you have?
Generally speaking, the way you'll be getting my findings is when I write the report. And I guess what I'm saying to you is, right now, people are contacting me on a very regular basis, and I don't want to discourage people by saying, okay, we're cutting it off on June 1. Or, and I also don't want to create the impression that either I or the board is saying, we've heard from enough people. Because that's, the position has always been that if you want to speak, you should be, you should, you should have your voice. I'm not saying this needs to carry on all summer, and I'm not saying that at all.
Sure.
It will get to a point where anybody who's going to come forward, anybody who's willing to speak to me, who I've reached out to, will have spoken to me, and then it's time to write the report and meet with you and tell you what my findings are, and what my recommendations are. I just think we should, given the fact that people are still coming forward, we should give it a little more time. Thank you.
Jack?
Yes, hi, how are you? I thank you for all that you're doing. I have a question. Does the administration keep track of students who may have transferred, particularly females that may have transferred out of this class over the years? And if so, I would think they would have asked why they transferred out. And that could potentially lead to to people, I mean, I happen to know that the one woman I know who had an issue with him said enough's enough and just transferred out of his class. I'm guessing there probably are others that fall into that category. I would hope that our administration would keep track of that information. I would hope when a student comes to them and says to the guidance counselor and says, you know, I got to get out of this class, that that would have maybe triggered some kind of something. But, but at the very least, if they kept any kind of records, that may lead to students that were impacted, and that would be something that I hope you could delve into a little bit.
Absolutely. I think that's, that's an important line of inquiry. I've already spoken to a couple of students who said that they left the class. And so that's part of what my circling back interviews are going to be about. I want to, again, I want to, I don't want to keep going back to the administration. So I want to finish the parents, the students, the outside, what I'll refer to as outside adults who just happen to have information. And then I want to go back to the administrators and say, okay, I've done all these interviews. These are some areas where I have further questions for you folks. And just like I did the first time, I'm going to interview them individually, not as a group. I don't like to admit, I, on one call that I had, not last week, but the week before, I was talking to a young woman, and she said, oh, my mom knew about this. And I said, can I talk to your mom? And she happened to be right there. So the girl left the room, I got to interview the mom right away, and didn't have to spend more time or effort. But I'm definitely, those are the kinds of questions where I am going to have to go back and say, all right, well, Chris Chinny dropped, said she dropped her class, dropped this guy's class, and she came to this person, and that's who she spoke to, because that was her guidance counselor. I haven't talked to all the guidance counselors, that may be, those may be additional interviews I'm going to have to do. You know, if, if, if a student says, well, you know, I told, I told Mr. Muser, my guidance counselor, that I had to get out of that class, and he didn't ask me why, he asked me why, and I told him. He asked me why, and he told me he'd follow up. I don't know the answers to those questions yet, but those are good questions that I do fully intend to ask.
Are there other questions for Attorney Chinny? Okay.
I just do want to say one thing in my defense, in case people are concerned. I did not go to a hair salon, I know that's still not allowed. I, I got so sick of my hair, I cut it myself.
I'm very impressed. I do agree that we should continue on with this questioning, because it seems like there continues to be new, new interviewees from all different populations, you know, from way back, parents, students. I would like to hear what other people's opinion.
Yeah, I agree with you. I think just let the process play out, we've come this far. I mean, we're interested in getting the truth here, and if it takes a little bit longer to get to that point, then, you know, so be it. So I agree with you.
Yeah, I agree also, because I think that we are gaining depth in some of the areas, and apparently, some of the new leads are taking us to a depth that we, I don't think maybe we even knew about. And that, I think, will be very, very helpful in figuring out how we then will deal with the information that Attorney Chinny gives us.
It might be worthwhile producing a table for summarizing students' years, parents, you know, without necessarily doing names, but sort of just categories, so we can see in a tabular form, how many students, how many parents, what years it spanned, how many administrators, that, just, you know, something like that might be helpful. Maybe that's at the end when the report is done, or?
Will be part of the report, because obviously, I do want you to, I do want the board to understand that student A was a, was a female student, she had him for something, and she had him for study halls, she had him for a class, she had him this year. These were her allegations. Without identifying the individual students by name, but I want you to have enough information so that you can digest it and understand what it means. So that will be a part of the final report.
Yeah, I think we asked that too, at the very beginning, if you would put categories of the, of different transgressions or not transgressions. And so we could really see percentages of student engagement. So I think that's a good idea.
The other thing I would say to all of you, since you're members of the community, I do think that at this point, I've interviewed enough people so that people are no longer afraid to talk to me, like afraid that I'm going to take an interrogatory tone with them, like, well, why didn't you report it? I'm not coming at it from that angle at all, I'm just asking them to tell, just to give you an idea of how the interviews have gone, I generally, particularly with the students, I said, look, you, you made the effort to reach out to me, I want to just let you talk and hear what you have to say. And I may have some questions to clarify so that I understand what you're saying. But this isn't an interrogation. This is you telling me what you have to tell me, and me asking follow-up questions to make sure I fully understand everything you're telling me. Just, just to give you a little flavor for it, one of the things I always do in investigative interviews, at the end of the interview, or at least when I, when it seems the interview's coming to an end, I always say, I always like to ask the following question. Is there anything that you know that I haven't asked you about, but the only reason you haven't told me is because I haven't asked you the right question? Because I find that at least half the time, there's something. Something else that they, oh, she probably doesn't care about that, or she would ask. So I really am, I'm trying to make them open-ended, I'm trying to make it, and several students have said to me, we appreciate the opportunity to tell our story. So there's value in that as well. At least, there is.
I just want to make a quick comment. I know one of the girls you talked to, and she said it was, it was a very good interview. She felt very comfortable talking to you, and that it went really well. And she felt she was, not relieved, but she was glad to get her story out, and it was great.
Oh, thank you for sharing that, I really...
It feels like anyone was worried about, like, and she reached out to me, and, and so I don't want that to be weird, but she called me, and her mother called me. And they both said it was a very good interview.
Well, I really, I appreciate that feedback, because I'm really wanting it. I want the message to get out there, that it's a comfortable process. I mean, it's not a comfortable process to talk about these kinds of things for anyone. But I, I want people to understand that it's not, there's, there's no judgment, there's no assumptions about who did what or why, and why, why are you saying this now when you didn't say it then? I didn't, I don't want people getting the idea that that's what the interviews are going to be like, because who's going to put him or herself through that? And that's not going to get you what you want, which is the information.
It made me feel much better about the process.
Well, I appreciate that, I appreciate your sharing that, I really do. Because I really have gone out of my way to try to have particularly the young people feel comfortable, comfortable talking to me and feel like I'm just here to listen, and I'm not here to interrogate, I'm here to listen.
I think it's really important, what you just pointed out about just this process of interview being a kind of purging that was exactly what we would hope could happen, because this has built up within these children for a very long time, and now even adults. So this exercise, I'm, I'm very pleased about psychologically. So I think that's a really good point.
I appreciate your saying, I appreciate your sharing that as well, I do appreciate that.
Very good. Brooke, do you have any other questions or any questions you'd like to ask?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay. So we agree that we're going to continue, go forward, we're not going to stop this interview process on June 1. We'll follow up with Attorney Chinny and make sure that there's, you know, there's still a steady flow of interviews, then we'll keep it going. If it seems to be dying down or stopped, then we'll get that information from her as well, and then find out from there where, what next step is. How does that sound to everybody?
That works for me.
Works for me.
Okay, and if there's any questions in between, she's available to answer those.
Absolutely. I'm, I'm right here in my house, not going anywhere. Even what, I'm on, I'm actually on the Planning, Zoning Commission in my town, and we're having all our meetings remotely as well, so.
I actually go back to work next week.
Oh.
Back in the office.
All my clients are on lockdown, so they're, they're, their offices either.
I'm back to work.
Hopefully, we'll have a little bit of normalcy little by little. Attorney Chinny, thank you for your time tonight, I greatly appreciate that. And thank you, everybody, for your questions and follow-through. If there's no other, are there any comments or follow-up from any board members? Okay, then I believe I would like a motion to adjourn.
Don't move, Craig.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody, for your time tonight, and I'll talk to you all soon.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Approved. Next on the agenda is discussion on the MOU for the Health Reserve account. What we're going to go through today, I have the draft that we've been working on. And Tim has said there might be some additional concerns from the town. And then also, conversation about establishing a committee, and the process for establishing the one broker, and how we want to go forward with that. And then, next meeting. So we could start with the draft. Tim, you had said that you hadn't updated because there were some additional concerns, and we wanted to wait until we had the town people, members to discuss and present their concerns.
Yeah, I'll turn it to Danielle.
Thanks, Alexa, I'm sorry, I was just wrapping up with the reporter, asking really tough questions, and I was like, I really have to go, I'll call you back.
Understandable, Danielle, thank you.
A welcome call, no, in exchange. No, I mean, I think Tim and Donna jumped in here, and Jim too, but I think we agree with kind of the outline. And I guess maybe if you, if you want, I mean, I could dive right in. You, I think part of what we wanted to pick up on was the idea of that kind of joint working group, if you will. Is that a good place to start, Alexa, with maybe first talking about that, and then getting into some of the more difficult details, maybe?
Sure, as far as wanting that working group as part of the MOU?
Yeah, I mean, again, or Tim jumped in here, but I, I think it could make sense. I think it's a key part of this working, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I guess the background I got was very, I'll say happily, we were able to get Vin back to provide some input on this. And so while he's been around for the next, for another week, he got back with some input on it as well. And he was, he was advocating for a working group that is similar in structure, just conceptually to like the retirement board that a lot of us were on earlier this morning on our Zoom call. Just in that it represents all the facets that's on it, and then it would be a kind of a central repository for, for that. And my feeling personally was that it would be structured or composed similar to the retirement board, so it'd be skewed a little heavier towards the Board of Education, who has the higher population on it, similar to the retirement board. But that that would provide a conduit to kind of be the overseeing group ongoing, that it, that it kind of followed up with all that.
Thanks, Tim. Alexa, does that make sense? As a place to start, or did you, go ahead?
I, I do think so. I want to hear what Gary Van and Craig think as well. I actually had written down some thoughts on this in particular, and it does sound actually quite similar to what Tim and Danielle were thinking, because I actually looked at the Retirement Board Committee this morning to see how that was structured and how that made up. I wonder if we want to keep even the structure somewhat what we have in this, what we've had in this meeting. I think that a representative from the Board of Finance, a representative from the Board of Selectmen, that way, it could be...
Alexa, maybe just one, one thing to throw out there, just before maybe we get into that, is to think about, because this was something Vin had brought up, was the idea, like, if it was more of a, say, an internal working group, or say, and again, we could play around with it, but it was like, you know, whoever our new Director of Administrative Services is, plus our Director of Finance, plus Gary, and another internal administrator from the school side, then, then it's just an internal discussion. Anytime something comes up, they can go back and forth on it, they can agree, or maybe they have a standing monthly or bimonthly, or whatever, or even quarterly check-in. But if we make it kind of like the retirement board, which was, you know, both Tim and my original idea, and what we liked, they brought up kind of the good point that then we have to go through, you know, the posting of all the agendas, it's an official, we have to go through legally creating it with the town attorney as a legal commission or task force, and then you all the, the notes and all the public, you know, everything... Um, and then, you know, all the, the notes and all the public, um, you know, everything that we have to do for all of these meetings. So, I'm, I'm open to it, and, and I think Tim is too, I don't want to secret him, but just to kind of put out there, just to, to be sure we're clear on the difference, and what kind of, I guess, the workload looks like for the different committees, and I guess just the the, the main concern, I think, resonated that, that Vin and Donna brought up was the idea that, like, as these out-of-the-blue, kind of not-so-normal questions come up, you know, how do we, we still then, if it is a full-on public board that meets just more regularly with set agendas, um, how do we address those last-minute, out-of-the-blue kind of questions that we get, to be sure we are still connecting? And that could probably just be through a procedure, an agreement, through the MOU or a policy, but I did, I just wanted to share that.
Um, Van or Gary, do you have any, um, input or thoughts on, on that?
My, my recollection was the, this board, the, the purpose was that all the entities would be hearing the same information. I mean, that was one of the, one of the things where, so, a- and then it was more of an advisory. It, it, they weren't going to make, necessarily make decisions that were counter to what we've already agreed to. For instance, on page two, at the bottom, each party shall have complete fiscal control over their respective sub-account, you know, things like that. You know, I think, and, and I think the town also, or if, if the Board of Ed has more representatives on this committee.
Sorry, there's a lot of static. I don't know if whoever isn't talking may be mute, it just sounds like someone's shuffling papers on the phone.
I, I just, I just want to make sure that what the, what the purpose and the responsibilities of this subgroup are going to be relative to decisions by the Board of Ed or by the town, that, that's what I'm asking.
Okay, no, and, um, you, I guess, you, for, for Gary and, and Jim, who kind of deal with this on a more day-to-day basis, then I, you can, can jump in here, but I mean, I would think, you know, the bigger decisions that have to be made, but even just something like we've seen, obviously COVID is a little bit of a different situation, so maybe they don't come up as often, but we've had two or three now decisions where Anthem has come and asked us questions to, to be made, and you, ideally, that would be something, as an example, that this group would be quickly discussing, agreeing, because we have to answer with one unified voice. We're not allowed to make separate decisions, so, you, that would, I think, help ensure that we are on board together, making the decision together, and we're kind of clear on, you know, the, the group effort and the collaborative spirit that we're going for, versus just, you know, one of us answering and not circling in with the other one.
What, what group are you talking about? Are you talking about just an internal group?
Well, that's the discussion, I guess, we're having right now, so that's the two things that could be on the table. Um, so Alexa was talking about a more public model, like the Retirement Board, which maybe, you know, Tim could share a little bit more about that thought. And then we were also sharing the idea of it just being an internal thing, where it would be like two people from the school side, two people from the town side. Like, I said, on our side, it would probably be the Director of Administrative Services and Director of Finance, on your side, it would be you, and then whoever else you guys determine. So that way, it's kind of, you know, group decisions being made.
It's, it's tough to say yes or no, to be honest with you, without seeing all the details. Uh, I mean, during our negotiations, we changed plan designs, we changed the type of benefits, uh, that has implications for costs on, on both sides, and that's, that's more of a Board of Education decision, you know, during negotiations, whi- which, whatever groups, not just teachers, it's custodians and, and secretaries and nurses and
You do that for benefits, though, for like pension benefits too, right, in retirement? So, I mean, you, you handle that separately versus the Retirement Board, so I guess it's a similar model there, if we were talking about that, like, the, the Retirement Board isn't getting into the details of negotiations with unions.
Again, I, I, it's tough to make an informed decision without the details.
Well, I guess we're just trying to brainstorm, and one of the things I would be very think is important, that we're really just talking about the most basic level, is that we have better communication, because of the example I used about COVID. It was a little bit disconcerting that it was never checked in with the town side, and that maybe it was just a misunderstanding, but that Gary, you were just responding to Anthem with decisions that impacted everybody. So that'd be one of the things we'd be looking to improve upon our communication, if there was a set procedure in place, that we'd all talk to each other ahead of time.
Sure.
And, um, Tim, perhaps you can explain a little bit how the Retirement Board is set up, and your responsibilities compared to actual investments, or, or however that, that works. Um, so we can maybe look at that, but I do think I view this board as somebody who makes sure the MOU is being followed and carried out, and are, are both sides happy with it? Do they need to come back to the table to make discussions, or some changes or alterations? I, I think that's how one of the roles of this board or this committee, as well as, um, making sure communication, like Danielle said, is, is open, um, so that all sides are, are knowing what, what's going on, and perhaps that will help when we are all represented by the same broker a- as well.
Yeah, I guess.
Yes, exactly.
Sorry, go ahead, Ben.
I'm sorry, Tim, that, that's what I thought this board was for, what Alexa just said, that the primary focus would be to watch the MOU, make sure that we're all doing it, and if there's something in the MOU that isn't working, or we have questions about, it would then come back to the same group, which is pretty much the group that we have meeting today, pretty much. That seemed to be a big thing, and then the communications part, making sure that we're talking to each other. I think our, our concern has been if there's a decisions made that affect the Board of Ed, that we have, what, seventy-something percent of the people, without having the, the control and responsibility over what those decisions are. I think that's, that's our concern.
Like, I guess, from the Retirement Board, it works similarly, um, in that you're, you're kind of just overseeing what the joint plan is, and we have, much like, you've got, uh, a, a broker here for the health insurance, we have a consultant that man, it helps manage the funds, and then we're just trying to make sure we're responsible for the town. It doesn't go into union negotiations, it doesn't go into any kind of negotiations like that, that's done independently by both groups, you know, um, by the town or by the, by the Board of Ed. But it, it's the overseeing group of the policy to make sure it's the correct one, um, or ones, and it's very similar to this, in that we don't have the same programs for the town versus the, the Board of Ed necessarily, but it all comes out of the same funding model, so we're, we're benefiting from each other. And it is a, a location to just make sure, pretty much what you said, Van, to make sure the dialogue is happening, to make sure that it's being looked at from an overall standpoint, and, and there's a, um, a group that could get together that can answer like we did when, um, when, when the markets kind of took a little tumble recently. So that there's a way that we can answer, um, for the entire town pretty quickly of, do we need to shift where, in this, in that case, do we shift where the retirement basis is, or, um, some of the planned allocations? In this case, you know, it could be, hey, there's a question of the COVID-19. Get the group together real quick, make sure there's one answer that everybody's comfortable with, and then move forward. So it just, it just widens the, uh, the contact base a little bit.
Yeah, and I was thinking, um, exactly that the board would be made up of, um, people, uh, exactly who, pretty much who we have here, so that, I, I thought that was pretty fair representation, um, and the right people, the right employees of, um, both the town and the Board of, Board of Ed, and good representation for, for the Board of Ed, and also Board of Finance, uh, being involved, as well as the Board of, Board of Selectmen. So I was envisioning about, I think, eight, eight people being on that board. Any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I think, I think we have five on the Retirement Board. I was just trying to count them.
Yes, I think you're right. Um, I think this kind of entails a little bit more, and assures people that everybody has enough of a voice, and everybody is, is heard and can be listened to. We could probably modify that if we find we, we need to do that, uh, but for starting out, I think maybe it would help people's, uh, have some peace of mind that there's good representation from, for all sides.
Are we, you see?
Alexa, I guess, just one other, just, I mean, total procedural point of clarification would be, so, I, I just want to be sure everybody's on board and understands, so this would be creating a new committee for the town, so we'd go through all the legal procedures of voting on, the Board of Selectmen would vote on and create this as a new committee?
Yes.
Versus right now, we're doing this just as a Board of Ed special subcommittee, and like, you know, Tim and I are just guests right now.
That, that's correct, because then I, then everybody's on the same, um, even playing field.
Yeah. Okay, and so, yeah, we just have to figure that part out, but, but okay, yeah, I, I'm following.
So I'm, uh, are these two issues then, are we, is the MOU and having a permanent board, two different things? Are we combining them now? I mean, in other words, should we finish the MOU discussion first, and then move on to, uh, permanent committee discussion, or, or I, I'm a little confused about how we're proceeding, I guess. What's the direction here?
Yes, I had wanted to start off with the MOU, but I think Danielle was very concerned about the committee, and wanting to have an understanding of how that worked before committing to certain wording in the MOU. That's my understanding, Ed, perhaps?
No, Alexa, that, that's perfect. I mean, it is, I think, for us to proceed with the MOU, we don't need to have the whole committee, you legally ironed out, but I want to get a sense where everyone stands, and like we said, what the, the oversight of this committee would be, versus also how we're then needing to maybe address in the MOU daily procedures, or, you know, hopefully not daily, but, you know, how you say Gary will interact with our new Director of Administrative Services, or with Jim, and, and how that will go, because maybe that has to be in the MOU then, if it's not going to be handled by this committee, since they're probably only meeting quarterly in this type of scenario. So I just, I wanted to clarify what has to be in the MOU, to be sure this relationship works, versus what the committee or task force is going to be taking on.
Right, I, I would hate to tie down, um, with some very specific details in, in the MOU. I'm not sure how other people feel, but I don't want to hinder, um, any, any of the progress or, um, day-to-day work that people may need to do by making it too, too specific in the MOU. Perhaps this, um, committee can provide direction, we want better communication between, um, the Board of Fi- the Board of Ed and the Board of Selectmen, or, or something like that, but, uh, to be too specific, I don't know if that will be, um, how good that would be.
I'm sort of, I think I have somewhat similar concerns. I mean, I feel like we should wrap up this MOU issue, and then move on to the permanent, and, and if that, if then doing the permanent means we have to go back and change the MOU, fine, but I still think it's better to sequence it, MOU then committee. And, and like Gary too, I think that, a- as we've seen through this whole process, the devil is in the details. Um, and, uh, I'm just a little concerned now, if we try to put, move the committee thing to the forefront, or alongside it, we'll, we'll just still be talking about this eight months from now, as we try to hammer out the details. So I'd just like to, I mean, I'd like to wrap up the MOU issue and then move on to the committee. That would, uh, be my reference. Um, but again, it, especially since, as Gary said, I, I do think the specific details are going, are going to determine, uh, we haven't, we haven't had discussions on that, or wrapped that, or talked about that, so I don't know. To me, it just seems to make sense to go through the MOU first.
I think that one of the, one of the points that Vin was trying to, uh, emphasize is the current MOU really has nothing binding to it. So there's nothing that anyone's really committed to it. So, putting a group over the MOU would in, would help in the oversight of that everyone's operating in the best interest. I mean, because really, the MOU is written, going through it, there's nothing that's binding. It's nothing that says you shall, or you will. It's, it's, you know, you try to, you minimize, I forget what the exa- I went through the exact wording after he sent something, and so I, I think that was the and you want to say you want to do the group first, you want to do the MOU first, if, if you do the MOU first, and I think we got to put more affirmative language in, um, is the recommendation of Vin, now that he's provided some, some input, and, and when I went back and reread it, you know, everything was with escapes in every, in every part, so I see where he's coming from, and, and why you kind of almost got to do them both at the same time, to make sure you got buy-in from both sides, and you guarantee that there's that buy-in. I mean, we're operating in good faith right now, um, but the MOU as written doesn't really lay a concrete, you, you know, we got to work together.
Perhaps the introduction of the MOU holds that there will be a committee for oversight?
Yeah, I mean, there's
That, Alexa, go ahead.
Go, go ahead, Danielle, I didn't.
No, I, I think something like that would be a positive step, and I guess not, I, you know, I think probably we're all coming at this with our own already, you know, thoughts in place. So just to clarify for, for, I think it was Craig, um, and others, yeah, I wasn't suggesting that right now we hash out all the details, but exactly what Tim kind of referred to, the MOU needs something in there that talks about the governance, and how we'll actually do this, because you know, I think we all left that last meeting thinking, okay, we have an agreement about trust, and trying to work collaboratively, and, and be sure we are communicating and understandably, everybody gets busy, and Vin wasn't here, and it gets confusing, but, you know, what I saw, you didn't make me feel great. So I would like some sort of governance structure, and something in place that says there is an agreement about communication, and that we commit to proactively communicating about decisions, um, and that we're, we're working together, and that there is some structure that will be formed. It doesn't have to be all the details worked out right now, but that we are committed to having some sort of governance oversight, which I think we've talked about at every meeting about the MOU, um, and everybody seemed in agreement about doing something like that.
So do we agree that we could put in a, a statement in the introduction about the, um, o- an oversight committee? And, um, generally, I don't know if we want to be so specific as to say who the member should be, um, because that hasn't been decided by the, uh, Board of Selectmen, or voted on by them, but put that there will be an oversight committee that will have representation from the three boards?
And what does that mean? What does an oversight committee mean? I don't know what that means. I mean, it, it, it sounds nice, but just because you have a whole oversight committee, again, I, I don't know what the details are for the oversight committee. Not saying I'm against it, but I just don't know the details. And, and just as a way of background, we've probably been working on this for well over a year, and the town has had, I mean, we both have had good amounts of input, so what you have before you is a compilation of the concerns or the revisions that, uh, the people on the town side had, and so basically, what you have before you is almost an agreement, I don't mean agreeing, agreeing, but an agreement that's been looked at by both sides, and the revisions, I believe, uh, that for the most part, each side has requested, given one or take, you know, one or two, uh, things have been incorporated into the proposed MOU. So it's not as though, uh, it's been a one-sided document, let me put it that way. Uh, I think both sides have had a, a good amount of input, and for the most part, most of the revisions that were requested have been made in the document. Uh, so it's, it's not as though, uh, you know, the word guidance, or, or the word something else. So it's, it's not as though, you know, the word guidance or the word something else was something that wasn't agreed upon, agreed upon in the sense we've revised the document and put those, that type of wording in it. It has been. So hopefully, you know, Tim and Danielle, you don't get the impression this was a one-sided Board of Education document, because it certainly wasn't. You know, we presented the initial one, and this doesn't look necessarily like the initial document after other revisions that have taken place.
Yep, and I think what Alexa, Tim and I seem to all be saying is, just at least the meetings I've been part of since joining, we've continually said governance structure has to be part of it, and we were going to talk and work that out, and I think just a one-sentence line with the understanding, we'll agree to and work out the details and we won't put forward something that people don't agree to, but there has to be some reference to a governance structure in this document where this document doesn't really hold any weight.
Craig, do you have an opinion on this? Craig, you just muted yourself.
Sorry about that. If we could get some, I feel like there's some unstated concern, I guess is what I'm hearing, or could we, could we write, could the town write an explicit statement of what they want to go on the MOU or to change the MOU so it's acceptable? So there isn't the concern? I mean, I think, I'm also, some of the genesis of this was the legal opinion that the Board of Ed couldn't or shouldn't renounce some of its autonomy that it was entitled to by statute. So I don't know, you know, how, wouldn't any governance committee be advisory in any regard? Because how can the Board of Ed give up its statutory, I don't know, anyways, that's a concern too, I guess I have. So, but I would, again, I would just come at it from if the current document isn't the way the town likes it, let's make some suggestions to change it to be acceptable to the town, whether it be rewriting it or whether being adding a sentence.
No.
Propose some things to actually be added or changed, and then we can discuss those specifically. I feel like we're sort of like running around after our tails here a little bit.
And Craig, maybe it is partially my fault that we didn't preface the meeting at the start correctly, just with everything happening, but I think that was part of the reason we wanted to have the call was just to have a discussion about what is the right governance oversight, so we could move this forward. And I think the sentence, the very simple sentence Alexa suggested was a great suggestion, but I think, you know, we had some questions on our side, you know, about this whole thing, is it a legal group, is it an internal group, and we wanted to talk with you guys about it, not just among ourselves. But then, I mean, and that part of the conversation has been helpful, at least on my side, to hear kind of what Alexa thinks and Van and others, but, and then, you know, Tim too. But that was the point, I guess, for me of hearing this, was what does the governance structure look like, so we can then add in, you know, that final sentence. And just to reiterate, you know, at every meeting we were at, I think it kept coming up, and it was sometimes these meetings are busy and everybody's thinking about other things at the same time, but I at least took away from all those meetings that we were all in agreement that we would have some sort of, you know, improvement of communication, and that would likely take the form of some sort of governance oversight, and that we kept pointing to the Retirement Board as a great example. So, yeah, I, but again, like, I think maybe it's getting overly complicated. I think what Alexa suggested was useful as what we are thinking about, but for me, again, the reason we didn't put anything in writing or try and redo this at this point was that we wanted to talk about it with you guys and then have this back and forth over a call instead of over emails.
I believe I've always viewed this committee as an advisory thing, just like the Retirement Board, and I don't think there's ever been any issues with that. And I think this committee shows that if we're going to be joining the healthcare and all under one, under one umbrella, but it's still separate, this committee is viable and necessary to keep the communication open and alleviate any issues or concerns. This committee would be something I viewed as meeting maybe biannually, and maybe one of those meetings includes our broker, so we're all hearing the same information at the same time. And making sure that the MOU is being followed, that's its job, not necessarily down into the details of the plans. And I do agree, I think we need to hear what the concerns are of the, of the town side so that we can address those, and we might as well, I think, get forward on that, and that may help also clear up some questions or add to what we view this other committee should be.
I guess I'm not sure what else you need to hear about the concerns from the town side. I think Tim and I both kind of summarized it. Is there more questions on that?
I thought that there were some specific things that wanted to be added into the MOU that we haven't seen.
I mean, Tim, you could jump in here. I wasn't suggesting that, I was just saying the governance, we just need to mention of the governance.
Yeah. Yeah, that was all, was that there be some, the way this is written right now, I think the concern is, let's, let's say the town replied to Anthem, whoever, in a way that impacted the Board of Ed, how do we put it over something to make sure we're either facilitating that conversation or that we're saying to both, hey, you know what you did just impacted us negatively, you can't, you got to see how that's affecting us. I'm not saying that's not happening now, I'm saying that there are recent instances where it might have happened, that I was not involved with, but I'm getting information from Vin. So what I'm trying to do is, if we put a governance over this where we know it's going to be represented, like you say, heavy, you know, I think Alexa, how you came up with the numbers for it is correct. So just putting that in here so that we're sure that there's some mechanism involved that keeps this going and keeps everybody at the same table ongoing, much did I see the Retirement Board doing? So that's really, it wasn't anything new for the MOU, there wasn't a, you know, we got to expressly go into this avenue, it was how do we manage this ongoing to make sure we all are staying at the table together? And don't go, I don't know, George, 15 years between sitting down to look at this and make sure it's kind of held together a little bit longer term and in a better structured way, but not, and, and I don't want to say, you know, obviously I came late to the table. I don't want to say that I think this was a document done by the Board of Ed, I know it was a collaborative document. The part that I think we're recognizing maybe a little shortcoming is how do we keep this a collaborative document for the next 15 years? And a living one, you know, not one that's sitting in the vault at Town Hall that doesn't ever get looked at.
If I may, I'm listening to everybody last time and this time, it seems, I think the word, when we said governance board, governance boards are making detailed decisions about things, and that's not what I hear. I hear this is an advisory board, and under advisory board, there are, there were two major responsibilities. One was to kind of monitor the MOU, so if any of the entities had an issue, we thought we need to talk about a certain clause in here, there's something that bothered the town or the district, that we could, we could talk about it together. That would be the first thing. And the second thing is to improve and maintain lines of communication. So if there's something that's happening and the broker needs to report, that everybody would be hearing the same information. Those are the two things, and it's advisory, so they're not telling the town, you have to do this, the district, you have to do this, but all of us are going to hear the same information, and if district has a, we have a problem with page four, number three, we have a place to bring that forth. And if the town has, this isn't exactly what we thought, it's a way to bring that back. Those were the two, that's, I heard that last time, and I think that's, and I'm fine with, that sounds reasonable, we're working together, it's advisory to both groups, we're making sure there's a way to deal with this MOU so it doesn't go 20 years, and we make sure that there's communication. If there's an issue out there, we talk about it. That would be my suggestion.
That's exactly it, Van, you said it much better than I did.
And better than me, so that was good.
What do you think? I'd like to hear, George, your point of view, having been in this.
Well, I think you raise a valid point in that it does need to be reviewed periodically so it doesn't go 15 or 20 years before it's addressed. But having said that, I think it's also important that there's an ongoing working group that can deal with the nitty-gritty and report back to the respective policymakers with their recommendations. And I think that's where a lot of the communication goes on. At a policy level, you know, US Chairs of Boards and Commissions have a lot of things to deal with, and I think you probably don't want to get involved with at least the working mechanisms and maybe the day-to-day problems that come up. And that's where I see the working group, the team that we, I'll call it a team, because we really were much of a team over many years, would deal with these things without the formality and legality of having to notify for notification purposes for meetings and so forth, and also because there's a lot of things that you want to kick around and maybe argue about internally to come up with a recommendation to the policymakers, but you want to have the freedom to talk about that freely. So I think whatever you do at a policy level, there needs to be that involvement at the policy level so that this team doesn't go that long without addressing these. But I think below that, there really needs to be a working group between both the Board of Education and the town on an ongoing basis that can deal with these things and put out the small brush fires before they come major conflagrations. So I think you already need both, but we experienced over a long period of time sort of a benign neglect, if I can use that term, for things that we as a, as a working group were dealing with and we dealt with them as best we could, but I'll call it benign neglect because that's the best thing I can come up with. I think it would have been helped if we had the parties, Board of Education, Board of Finance, and the Board of Selectmen more involved at various times to avoid having gone so long without addressing those. So I guess my take on it is that you kind of need both, but the mechanisms and the mechanics of the day-to-day work and interactions, I think, need to go on sort of behind the scenes to make it really work and to get the teamwork and the communication flowing at the staff level, and then bring those concerns and policy issues to the policymakers, being the boards involved when, you know, when it calls for that. So I don't know if that answers your question, Alexa, but that's my take on it.
George, thank you. I know on the town side, we would, we would very much welcome that.
So a line in the beginning of the document somewhere that says that there's an advisory board to monitor the MOU and improve and maintain lines of communication. And then there was a line, paragraph four, that we had stated last time, that needed to be added in. Wording that stated both parties should review annual recommendations by plan administrator, I think was, was what was suggested.
I think, Alexa, to what George was saying, it might be beneficial to beef that up a bit, I mean, that, and that's what I think was Van was saying more articulately than I was, like, it's about the communication that takes place between the groups, you know, when decisions need to come up or be made or throughout the, you know, it's not just yearly, it's, you know, as these questions pop up from Anthem or elsewhere. So I mean, if, based on what George shared, if there could be something in there that further encourages, you know, check-ins or communication or an official, you know, working group between the town side and the school side, just to be sure we are, we do have that mechanism in place and that we're accountable on both sides to communicating with each other, you know, I think that would, at least on our side, that would be welcome. I don't see a downside to having that.
Would, could you word it, I mean, I like George's idea about the working group, because I think that's where the inf, things are going to get done. You really can't wait sometimes for advisory group. I mean, if you add a, and again, this is just off the cuff, so please bear with me, you know, the working group which consists of the staff of the town and the Board of Education. I mean, I think that's what you're talking about, George, I don't want to put words in your mouth.
Yes, no, that's exactly, that's exactly what I'm talking about.
Well, I would offer to draft something that has, that defines the advisory group with the monitoring, the MOU and communications, that the advisory group would meet, you know, biannually and deal with those, those two agenda items. And we'd also put a line in there about a working group composed of the staff from the town and the district that would deal with the day-to-day operations as necessary. And I think if that, if there's a problem with that working group, then that's what would come to the advisory group as an issue. That's the way it should work, I think.
Yeah, I agree.
If you'd like, we could certainly draft that and get something out in the next day or two.
That, that sounds great to me. Danielle and Tim?
That sounds perfect.
Deal by me.
Wow. Are there any other concerns with this MOU that people want addressed that we haven't heard?
Alexa, I'm sorry, you just mentioned on paragraph four, there was another line to add, did we miss that?
There was, it was in the minutes from the last meeting, and Tim was going to add in that line, but perhaps adding this advisory board and the working group, perhaps that fulfills that, that line.
I think it does.
Good. We'll get that out in the next couple of days. No problem.
Okay, that sounds great. The only establish one broker, do we need to set up a meeting, Danielle, with you and Brown and Brown for you to sit and talk with them to see as we look towards one broker?
Yeah, no, I mean, we're happy to talk, I mean, and I know Van and Gary, you always had shared the last meeting that you were really happy with Brown and Brown, and you really didn't like the idea of going out to bid again, so, you know, I can, I think I can accept that in the kind of, we're trying to all work together and be on the same page and, you know, you're happy with them, but I do just want to share, like, the only, so my hesitation is just the price, and just, you know, we did run the numbers, and it looked like, you know, when we were all using Lockton, you know, it was about, it was under $50,000 a year for everything, and I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but the potential estimate we're looking at for everybody to use Brown and Brown was like $100,000, so it just, the price tag is concerning to me and like what we're getting for that value, how, and again, I have no background in this, so you might say they're totally different groups and the type of work they perform is above and beyond, but that's my only hesitation with just saying yes to Brown and Brown, is that they're quite a bit more money, it seems, than maybe other, other actuaries and brokers of record, but I don't know if, Tim, I'm not on the Board of Finance anymore, so I don't know if you want to weigh in on that one.
Cost savings are always good, but I'm, I'm new to this too, and I'm only coming from one aspect, so I will politely, my only input is that cost savings are good. My other, I will let Gary and Jim Sullivan, who've been dealing with this, be the voices of it, because I don't know enough, frankly.
Well, this is Jim, if I may. Just, to me, it's going to be Brown and Brown. I think the town, direct administration, and perhaps myself, need to meet with Brown and Brown and just make sure that we're comfortable with them, they understand what our former advisor Lockton has been doing for us, what we expect their annual services to be, and that they represent both the town and the Board of Ed equally.
Yeah, I think that's what Alexa was saying, correct me if I'm wrong, Alexa, that was your offer, right, that Brown and Brown would meet with Jim and our director?
Yes, I think that's obviously very, very necessary, and I think also having this committee set up will represent to them too, that we are all equal in all of this, and so they represent all of us equally. So yes, but Jim, I definitely think that for you to be comfortable and to have your questions answered, you and Danielle and Donna or whoever will be in that position should sit and meet with Brown and Brown to make sure that you are comfortable.
But to that end, and Vin can chime in on this. But to, to that end, and, and Vin can chime in on this. I'm not involved with, you know, I've, I've never been involved with this as far as the annual budgeting of the health insurance fund, the administration of it. It was between Director Administrative Services and, and Lockton. So I don't really, I'm not 100% sure what Lockton, what kind of services Lockton has been providing us. So if we could get those done before, while Vin is still here and just communicate what, with that, that, that department needs to administer the plan.
Sure. I would say whoever the town feels needs to sit in on the conversation is who it should be. That, that's totally up to the town.
Okay, we can set something up. We can, we can talk offline and see what we can try and quickly.
All right, that sounds good, Danielle. I will touch base with you on that or get you whatever communication or do whatever has to be done to make that happen quickly. So it's, Vin has a chance to be in on that conversation. Jim, how does that sound to you?
Yeah, that's, I, I think that's imperative. Get that done sooner than later.
Fabulous, thank you.
Alexa, I would offer, I think that Tim or Danielle, I think at a public meeting like this, I'd rather not get into details, but we do have a history with both of those brokers. And I'd be happy to talk to you individually about our experience and the value that we think we have now with the Brown and Brown. Cause it's not just a, what you get on the bill, it's other types of services that we feel were very important with our, with the Brown and Brown. So I'd like, just to offer that.
Thank you, that would be really helpful. And I'm sure it would be helpful for Tim too, just to be able to explain, you know, the cost difference and defend it. So thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so Van, you will get the draft together and get that out to people in the next few days?
I'm writing it right now.
Danielle and Tim, I will get Brown and Brown's contact information and do whatever we need to do to get you guys set up. I'll take care of that over the next couple of days as well. And is there any other questions or concerns or something we need to add?
I think that sounds, thank you.
Great, thank you. And do we want to meet again be, in a couple of weeks? What kind of timeframe are people thinking? This should, it sounds like we can have this done before June 30th if, or close as possible. We do need to bring it to our boards. So what's, what's the timeframe people would like to keep to?
Um, I can be flexible. I mean, I guess it depends on, like you said, the, the language comes back to us tomorrow. We could look at it and I don't know how quickly Brown and Brown can meet or talk, but I can see if, you know, Vin can do it, you know, Thursday or Friday.
Okay, well, what I'll do is we'll get all these other details hammered out and then we can pick a date, then I'll have Stacy and Anna talk and pick some dates for, to send out to us to finalize all those details. How does that sound?
Good, thank you.
Okay, if there is nothing else, um, we can have a motion to adjourn.
Some move.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody. Nice to have a nice productive meeting. Have a great day, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.